All right, we're gonna start a little early tonight since we are being aired currently. So may I call to order tonight's school committee meeting and have approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments from the public tonight? Okay, no comments. We will move on. We are going to table our self-evaluation discussion with Jim Hardy. Unfortunately, he had an emergency that he had to attend to. So we will be scheduling that, rescheduling that for the second meeting in September. So we will move on to school committee goals.
So I think Beth and I both will jump in a little bit on this. Um, I, we had given you some background information. Um, really after talking felt that we should be, the school committee should be establishing school committee goals. And approving those goals and um, Beth, you wanna talk a little bit about where the came from?
Sure, absolutely. Where they came from, absolutely. So um, the idea was to look at the um, the Department of Education's district standards and indicators. To um, to see kind of where we would fall and how we could potentially align uh, the expectations for district standards um, to um, possible school committee goals. So um, a lot of what you see here is language that mimics or is um, or comes from uh, the language directly from those standards and what the expectations are. So what we wanted to do is um, we wanted to look at what the indicators were for success, but also what is evidence that we could show or that the school committee could show that um, that these uh, goals, these uh, um, indicators for success were being met. So um, and with guidance of course from, from, from Mike and also um, you know, from past practice. Um, we organized them uh, in order of um, really I guess of, of, of priority so to speak. Uh, what school committee could consider their own goals to be of priority. Um, they align with where we are headed with district goals. In fact, a lot of our district goal planning came from some of this. So it's been very helpful to have um, thought carefully about school committee goals first. Uh, and um, I think that um, you will notice that a lot of the responsibility falls on the district to c- to make sure that we are following protocol, that we are doing what we need to do. And, and school committee uh, co- basically comes in with making sure that we are following protocol. Um, and there's a lot more to this too. I'm not sure if you wanna jump in from here.
Sure, um, I think we, we took the lead of the school committee in making su- in, in ensuring that student support um, was clearly a goal and so you will see that in goal two throughout. Um, in identifying students who aren't performing at grade level. And um, assuring the, the individualized instructional supports to help all of our children be successful. And um, on the, on the back page of that second goal, you'll see the safety pieces that we've talked about at, at many meetings, the behavioral task force, all of those pieces are in there. Um, the third goal is um, human resources and professional development. Um, these are goals that really the school, you'll see the school committee will direct the administration. You know, you don't do these things directly, you don't supervise and evaluate other than um, the superintendent. And um, but these are important and, and as we have talked about the district improvement plan, um, we have clearly delineated recruitment, selection, assignment, and retention of staff. And we'll talk about that a little bit later when I, when I review hiring. Um, but that has clearly percolated, I think, to the top of all of our plates as we um, look for staff. And then the fourth goal, curriculum instruction and assessment. Um, that's consistent with the goals that you've had for the district in the past. Um, I think really the, the one goal that is, might appear to be new is leadership and governance. And through our discussions with Jim Hardy, um, the focus is on how the school committee governs and how you promote a culture in the district to um, to collaborate, to create public confidence. Um, and a joint responsibility for student learning. So um, you will see in, within that goal is the budgeting piece under the um, back page of that with educationally sound budget development, which is a goal that the school committee over the years has consistently said that you um, want in there. So we tried to uh, ensure that. Um, so I don't know, you've, you've had some time to look at this. And I, I think it's a stronger document perhaps than, than we've had in the past.
Thank you. I think it's nice that you were able to consult with Jim, especially since he has the results of our self-evaluation. I think that was probably really helpful.
It was and it, and it helped us focus on that first goal of leadership and governance.
Absolutely. Do you have any comments or?
Are we approving?
Not tonight, not tonight.
I, I, my comment is this, I, I was hoping that once we got a good meeting, um, you know, down on paper that we can do, where I mentioned, a second retreat. Cause I just would like to delve just a little bit in it to make sure we're all on the same page. Um, physically in front of each other, I think. Do you think we can manage that?
I, I, of course you can. It's time and uh, as long as we're willing to give the time to it. Um, I think that that makes um, a lot of sense. You could have a meeting between the two September meetings if you wanted, or we could front end one of the September meetings, leaving the other one for a workshop. Whichever, whichever the committee prefers.
I'm a little concerned about that, cause wasn't the second September meeting, we were gonna start looking at budget? Protocols and so forth. I, I would not wanna start any later than that with the difficulties we had last year.
So, so.
Getting town information.
If we go to the um, on the horizon, if you wanna look at it now. Um, the first meeting right now is fairly light for September third. So you, we actually could push the report on summer programs and the community school report to the thirteenth. I mean, excuse me, the seventeenth, if you wanted to have a workshop on the third. And a workshop to talk about the retreat and, and any other items, you could start a little bit earlier that day if that's.
So start early and then have our school committee meeting at six?
Uh, I don't think you would have to. We could combine the things that are on the September third schedule into the September seventeenth. Without, I think, pushing budget off in that case. The future school calendar can go um, into October. Even the community school update could go into October if you, if you wish.
Do we have a timeline? Do, I mean, we wanna approve these probably sooner, better, right? So, does that work for you guys, the very first day of school?
To have a workshop slash retreat? September fourth?
In place, yeah.
September third?
In place of our regular meeting, at the same time, time, location?
Could do four, five, or six, whatever your pleasure as a committee is.
Four's good with me.
I can do four.
Till the third.
So four PM on September third.
That's Tuesday.
Will be a workshop.
Tim, please, oh wait, no, what about Tim? Hold on.
No, I'm back in my car.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
So we'll do a workshop and uh, we'll have the goals and any other items that you give us.
And then will we still do our regular scheduled meeting? No?
No.
You wouldn't, I don't think you'd need to, cause we can put those on the.
Put those in the, on the seventeenth.
I just don't wanna load the seventeenth, cause with Jim coming as well, that's mainly concerned. Jim's coming on the seventeenth. We have to add him.
You've got community school highlighted, is that, are they, are we taking them off for that date?
Well, I could move, I mean, I've, I've gone sort of back and forth with Tracy. We could easily go on that to the first meeting in November. I mean, of, of October.
Of October, okay.
I have a question about the goals. Mike, why or?
Beth.
The priority, I mean, I would put the student stuff first.
You can, you can have any order that you would like.
I would put two first.
Goal two?
Well, because it's student support and that's, you know.
See, that's why I think we should have a workshop.
Yeah, I think, I think that's.
Okay, I don't necessarily agree, Tim. I understand what you're saying, but we need to make sure we're equipped to, you know what I mean? With all that we need to be equipped with, as far as our governance, we're on board on the same page.
Right.
To provide that student support. That's just Mike.
And I have co- comments that I wrote out, so I'll hold them until we have our, okay, perfect.
Thank you.
We can do that, thank you.
Yeah, we can just work on that. We just don't wanna overload this, it's a lot.
So we're gonna be done at six fifteen, are we?
No, no, no. We have a lot more to discuss, okay. Moving on to committee discussions, votes to take. May I have a vote to authorize the student activity accounts for the class of twenty twenty-three? Nantucket High School moved from CPS. Class twenty twenty-six, Cyrus Pierce, moved from NIS. Class twenty twenty-nine, Intermediate School, moved from NES. And class twenty thirty-two, Elementary School, new pre-K class.
Before we vote, uh, can I just make sure that that's gonna be put in a minute, so detailed? Because just looking at the agenda, that, you don't understand it to be that way. And anyone looking should be able to understand it, so if it's in a minute, it'll be good.
Thank you. So may I have a vote to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to authorize transfer of money from the Nantucket High School Agency account to Nantucket High School Student Activities account to facilitate deposit for class of twenty nineteen into Cape Cod Five Cent Savings Bank in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, four hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve donation from Dorothy Harrison Egan Foundation to the Nantucket High School for Nursing and Allied Health Course in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. All in favor? A vote to approve the donation from the University of Michigan to Nantucket High School as an honorarium for participating in social research study in the amount of five hundred dollars. All in favor? Vote to approve donation from Cape and Islands Workforce Development Board to Nantucket High School in the amounts of two hundred, oh sorry, two thousand dollars and seven hundred and fifty dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, I think there might um, be some discussion before uh, we approve the handbooks. And I'd like to approve them, approve of them individually if possible.
Should we do a motion first and then the discussion?
And CPS should not be in that motion.
Okay.
They're not presenting that.
Okay, so may I have a motion to have a discussion? Is that what you're asking?
No, if you wanted to approve individually, we made a motion.
Oh, individually, yes. Make a motion to approve individually, yes.
And then we can have comment. So moved.
Second.
Second, I'm not sure what we're voting to do.
Just approving of each individual handbook?
See, what you would want is a motion for each. You want a motion to approve the NES handbook.
Motion for the NES.
And then you can ask for discussion.
After there's a second, motion, second, discussion, vote.
Right.
Correct.
So we got the motion, we got the second.
Okay, discussion, thank you.
And um, wh- what I would say is that the principals are prepared to respond to any questions. I do want the committee, the full committee, to know that the um, subcommittee, policy subcommittee did meet and review um, and made recommendations. And um, many, if not all of those recommendations were um, carried out. So the changes that you will see um, in, in this latest copy is a little bit different than what you had in the first copy.
Paul, and we received a summary of the changes too.
Yes.
You did.
These are probably easier, thank you.
Yes.
So is there any discussion, any comments or feedback?
Questions for Mrs. Hubich?
Mine is minor. And it was just a suggestion of adding in chapter five, page twenty-five, the website for the community school rather than just having everybody for extended day contact Tracy Roberts. I, you probably do online registration, do you? Okay, well even if you don't, I just think having a website where you could access rather than calling your ph- phone. And maybe adding whatever preferred contact, maybe it isn't Tracy, maybe it's Elise, but.
We can.
Need further discussion?
For which, and I, we're talking.
The element, Nantucket Elementary.
Elementary school, so with that addition.
I'm good, that was it, yeah, thank you.
All right, so now I'm kind of confused, I'm sorry.
You need to take a vote.
May I, yes, may I have a vote to approve the NES handbook?
Aye.
So moved, aye.
Second?
Second, okay, aye.
Thank you. Okay, so now I need to ask for a motion to have a discussion of the intermediate.
Well, not a motion for discussion, a motion to approve with a second, then we discuss.
And we can have a.
Just take one motion.
All right.
And make a motion.
Conversation, a conversation about NIS.
So it's been second, so we're ready for discussion.
Ready for discussion.
No discussion.
Anything for Eve Marine?
I didn't have anything for NIS.
So may I have a vote to approve the handbook for NIS?
Aye.
Aye.
And um, NHS?
Motion. Make a motion to approve the NHS handbook?
Second.
All in favor?
Well, we have a discussion.
Well, that's Roberts Rules of Order, that's what we're trying to follow.
Sorry.
I didn't bring out the, my copy, and I didn't see it in the package here of the changes.
Well, I, I would ask then, just to confirm what I believe I read. You did take into account uh, the subcommittee's thoughts and uh, changed to no hats, headgear of any kind that would cover eyes for security reasons. Which I think gives the staff the authority to do what they need to do. And that's why I had suggested, and I believe you've changed, the basic wording of the electronic devices in classrooms to be uh, off, in the off position unless specifically approved by the staff. I felt that that gave the staff the backing to be able to say, no, that's the policy and I don't wanna argue with you about it, boys and girls. Um, those were the two major things, I think, weren't they? Thank you.
So as I, I was trying to say, I still don't agree with the cellphone. I'm not comfortable with that it spells out clearly enough. I think there's still too much of an, in a general state. That's my opinion. Cause to me, it sounds like they can have a cellphone anytime, except for when they hit the classroom door. It goes off. When you come out of the classroom door, it can go back on. So you'll have it, you know, texting, supposedly no calling, all through the hallways, all during lunch.
Not in the bathrooms.
Like anybody's gonna follow them there.
Aye.
And there are no cameras there. So there's my dilemma. I think it's too much cellphone still.
I think that the problem is that genie's out of the bottle. Um, I think we ought to have our administrators dealing with things that they really are significant. I think I agree with you, but I think it's impossible to impossible to control out of the rooms. And I think if we set them up to do too, too much, it puts them in an unenviable position.
I think um, I, I, I agree with you that the genie's out of the bottle. But sometimes when that rule exists, it will allow much more control than you think. But once you take away any sense or sort of control, you could have chaos. And there's my concern. It's a school environment to a certain extent. People don't talk to each other like they used to. And as a school, we have to also be focused on the bullying aspect of things. We do, it's a real thing. And bullying happens a lot more on a cellphone than it does anywhere else, or electronic device, I should say. So there's my concern. You can leave out of the classroom and a person can start bullying the person that was in the classroom with them. The second act is over, all the way until they get to the next classroom. That's just in my mind and head. How do we control that? How do we try to put a cap on that? I just, I'm not a hundred percent sure I know the answer to that question. I am giving my opinion. We have to take a vote. I know that my opinion is only one of five, so there it is.
I have concerns about the smartwatches.
How you are gonna control that?
Do you want Dr. Bucky to join, or you just wanna have a conversation among?
I think, I'd like to hear from John. Um, whether you think controlling cellphones in non-classroom areas is, is reasonable without driving the both of you crazy.
I don't see the.
Excuse me, ma'am, could I ask, remember, that's one of the
Right.
of the pieces that we put in place for anybody in the audience to speak and be recognized. Thank you, John.
Yeah, I don't think it's a significant change because we allow cellphones at lunch now. And so students can have their cellphones at lunch. This is just in chasing in the corridors. We only have three minutes passing time. I don't think that students are going to be doing a lot of cellphone use uh, in the corridors. It is exactly as you said, Tim, uh, through the faculty conversation, a battle that they don't want to engage. Responsible use as well as teaching, certainly the smartwatches are a new piece of technology. You know, we're trying to stay ahead.
And, and just wanted to clarify, John, that um, you would roll this out as a, a one-month trial or something so that that would be clear to the students that if this was not working, you'd roll.
This is what they've been asking for. And if, if they can demonstrate that they're, you know, if hallways are getting clogged up and kids are late to class, or teachers are engaging in battles because they're not ending conversations or that, uh, then this can go away.
May I ask, um, do we still find it necessary to collect cellphones for the intermediate class? That it, oh, I thought it said in the handbook that you were, no.
What do you mean by collecting?
Collecting, I don't have it in front of me.
In a class, you mean?
Yeah, those little shoe things, you're putting them in.
Yeah, I thought I read that in the update, I'm sorry.
But that's still up to teacher discretion, isn't it? Yeah.
Did it say that?
Yeah, it does. I, I mean, I, I appreciate so, certainly the footnote at the back, just saying how you came to this decision. I think it is hard to, to govern and I think sometimes you have to pick your battles. And do you really want, I, I would rather see your teachers in the hallway greeting students coming into class than trying to mindfully see who's texting or who's on the phone or taking pictures. Cause it, as you said, is a three-minute interchange and that's pretty darn fast. I, eh, one question I had there, just on how you're gonna, the oversight of not taking phones to the bathroom, I don't know. Other than body checking everybody on the way out, I don't know how you'll be able to do that, but.
And I would say that was a problem under the old policies as well. Students would say, I don't have my cellphone, I forgot it today, so they don't put it in the cabinet at the beginning of class. But then they're walking out of the bathroom on a phone, so teachers are interacting with students on that.
Right.
Isn't there a way to electronically block?
There is.
Bathrooms. I have a question uh, about the headgear. Because sooner or later, we will have a student with a religious exemption wearing a burger. Should we include that? Is that in there?
We have not.
No.
That is not in there.
But I think we should rather than having a blanket rule that we end up having to modify.
If I may, we, we have actually at other levels modified the hat rule for a medical condition too. Um, I think, pretty sure NIS and NES both, maybe CPS has had a student who was recognized with a medical condition that has been allowed to wear a hat, so. I think we would always look at medical and religious.
What about cultural?
Well.
I'm just saying, if we're, if we're, eh, I think you have to make eh, extensions for all possibilities. And maybe it's a case by case perhaps, rather than just doing a blanket, but I do think that.
I think it's case by case and I think it should be addressed on a one-on-one. I don't know that that needs to be in the policy.
I was gonna say, putting it in the policy might invite
Yeah.
more struggles than it solves. I, I think our administrators are, this is not a good pedagogical term, pretty cool about taking into consideration um, such things. And I, I remember a kid that I asked to take a hat off once, not knowing that there was a medical reason. And it was not in our handbook at the time that you could do that, but the administrators had made that exception for that kid. I'm sure they would if there were reasonable, valid, religious or cultural or whatever concerns raised without having to invite it by having it in the handbook.
Right, no, and I'm, I'm fine with the um, case by case.
And I do, I would like to say, I agree, Zona, I, I liked it when the rule was simply all cellphones will be turned off when you set foot in the building. End of discussion, clear cut, relatively easy to enforce. But I'm sympathizing too now with the enforcement issues. I mean, cause we've got, what, four hundred kids in the middle school? You guys must have five something. Um, it's just so difficult to stay on top of it. If you have to look at every kid that's got a cellphone in their hand.
I have to say, it's part of life though. Everybody has cellphones now. And I agree that there's a time and a place, but I feel that that's what we're teaching them, appropriate use.
I, I would make the point though that um, there are different standards for different developmental levels of children. And so I'm not sure that what might be allowed and appropriate at the high school level, you won't see that in the elementary and middle school level. And I think that's generally um, accepted, you know, through community standards if, if not school standards.
Just one more comment while we have John up. Um, and I read this over and over again and I, first of all, when I read about the um, attendance, I, I did a deep breath, about a gasp. But um, and I, I know it's here, but I just have to ask that you would meet with a student and families on certain extreme cases? Because I'm thinking of the anxious kid, the depressed kid, the, you know, there are multiple reasons why students miss class. And I, that would only increase the anxiety, um, I would imagine, so um, yeah. I know it's here, but I just had to say it out loud. Thank you.
I, I was pleased to learn that the numbers you picked were based on the state standards. I mean, it's not like you pulled a number down out of the air or out of your hat. And that just made it valid for me.
And I do wanna say thank you very much to you and your staff who worked really hard. So I appreciate that. Thank you for your help with this. Thank you. So may I have a motion?
We have a motion, we have a second vote.
May I have a vote to?
Aye.
Second vote to approve the Nantucket High School handbook.
Aye. Thank you.
You have a, wanna pose?
Yes.
Wanna pose? May I have a vote to approve August sixth, twenty nineteen minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a vote to approve transfer and invoices?
Second, I mean, second, I'm into the game.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Can I just ask a question, Jen, before we get on CPS, we're, we're gonna come back to that?
Yes, and if I could just say, um, the reason is that Julie um, wanted an opportunity to speak with her staff um, about those changes and I think that's a wonderful, inclusive um, thing to do, so.
And plus subcommittee, it wasn't ready for subcommittee.
Okay. But this doesn't show any suggested changes, or does it? With what we have?
No, I, I wouldn't go by that because it's, it's been revised already.
Okay.
Okay, and we will give it uh, to the, we'll try to get the subcommittee together to take a look at it, or I'll get it out.
Great, thank you.
All right, Superintendent, report.
Um, I, I think the, the. Um I I think the the biggest thing in everybody's minds is hiring. And um I I would say that in my ten years here, this has been the hardest uh hiring season that I have seen. And um it is really very challenging. Um talking to colleagues across the state, it's like that everywhere. But you can imagine that it is exacerbated for us. Um if you add the housing and the cost of living piece to everything else. Um and there are certain positions that you just, you you might have a pool of three or four, particularly math, science, special education, world languages, I think those in particular. Um but I'm even seeing it, we're even seeing it in the elementary school. And it's just um, it's very concerning when um there is a a shallow pool and we are uh later than we usually are in hiring and we will most likely start the year with some holes. Now, that's the bad news, the good news is that there's been progress even in the last two or three days. Um as of today, and and this is something we don't even like to say out loud, but as of today, NES is fully staffed um and we'll keep our fingers crossed. Um NIS uh hired, made an offer that was accepted today for a fourth grade teacher. So the only opening at NIS right now is the ESP, that's the Educator Support Personnel, which is the Administrative Assistant in um in the office at NIS. And I know that Eve Marie has a few candidates now and I would expect that she will be interviewing um this week. So um we will see what that brings us, so that's really good news. Um CPS has a few more challenges, in particular, filling the Chinese position has been challenging, we had a candidate that we really liked. Uh housing, the worries of coming to Nantucket. Um and some of those candidates that they have need visas. It's more complicated for that position than it is for most. Um we also have two teaching assistants that we're trying to fill. Um one due to a transfer to NIS. And um I know that Julie um has a candidate for those two and the word is out and we're working hard, I um I'm sure Michelle is working on that as well. Um the, we have not um filled the the, what was formerly the Dean of Student position just yet. Um it's really more important right now that we have all of our teachers on board and we can start the year without that position, whether it's a Dean of Student or a Behavior Specialist or Support Specialist. Um so we continue to look, but Julie and Beth and I and and Jamie and Michelle have met and talked about how we're going to start the year so that children are best served. And they have a a plan in place to to do that. Um the possibility of hiring a a part-time tech integration teacher as we knew was slim. Um but I think we have most of our Unified Arts covered um with the schedule that they have put together. The high school has two TA positions open, one is the in-school suspension um position and uh word is still out, we're trying to recruit and just haven't come up with the person for that and we would love a bilingual ELL um TA person. TAs have been tough this year and I think that that is directly related to the economy. Um it's not usually our salary that brings TA candidates to us. It's usually the calendar year and having the summers off to either be with your children or work other jobs um on the island. And um so it's it's been uh usually the calendar or the um health benefits that bring candidates to us. And in this economy, um right now, people can make a lot more doing other jobs on Nantucket. So we will keep at it and we know that um the new teachers will be here on Friday and that all teachers will be here on Monday. And then all of our, um most of our children will be here on the day after Labor Day. And so, ready or not, we will open and we will be ready. So we're prioritizing um the needs of the students first as we um look for these candidates, so. Um I don't know if anybody has questions on any of those positions, happy to take them. Okay. Um the EAP, the Employees Assistance Program, um I met with you at the last meeting and just gave you a few of the numbers. Um we are continuing efforts to try to get in under the town of Nantucket's EAP. Um it is, we weren't included in um in the negotiation of that contract. Um but we we feel that it's a very good system that um gives our employees um some added features over what we have now. And so um we we haven't sealed the deal on that, but one way or another, we will continue the Employee Assistance Program for our faculties. And that's all.
That's it.
Um all I can add is that um I've been involved with the um the mentoring program and and working with mentors and preparing them for um their work with new uh new teachers. And it's been a great opportunity, not only for me to meet some of the um exemplary teachers in the system who have offered to mentor new teachers, um but also to work with them as they come together as a team to um provide um excellent, an excellent start to the year for um our new staff. So I think that's been a nice opportunity for me, it's been great also getting to know uh them. So I I look forward to meeting the new teachers on Friday.
Great, thank you.
May I just ask a question on the the mentoring piece? Is it just um working with new teachers or are you also putting mentors in with teachers who are already in the system but they need?
We do have mentors assigned to certain teachers who may need um additional uh support. Uh those uh mentors aren't necessarily um going through mentor training because they are either already um mentors or um or they may be going through if they are brand new and we are using them um this year or we're, or they have volunteered to be a mentor even for uh someone who may need it um beyond the 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 mentoring that they have. There are occasionally uh teachers who move dif- to different schools, different grades, different content areas and having a mentor uh for the, for a new change is helpful. So um uh we've we've looked at that, um obviously uh those that are in more need of support are the ones that are going to um, we're going to assign a mentor to, but that's a good question.
And those mentors then what, with the super- superintendent or with the principals?
Principals.
Principals.
Yes, principals.
But but um understand that the concept in mentoring is the, those mentors do not report to the administration. You try to keep that um relationship separate from that because otherwise the mentees, uh it it creates a different relationship with the mentees if they feel that um the mentor is bringing back information about their performance.
Sure, yeah.
So um while there is communication, it's not necessarily of a reporting type.
Right, thank you for that.
Any subcommittee work updates?
Not familiar.
Okay.
We we did actually have a, another negotiations um team meeting. And so um we are gathering information for that team and we're looking forward to kicking off negotiations on September sixteen.
Great, that's good. And Joel's not here tonight and I believe we've already discussed our agenda for our first meeting in September.
May may I just clarify, uh would you like to meet in the conference room on September third for that workshop?
Yes, I would.
Conference room down at NES.
At NES, the N S. I think it's a little um easier for you.
Just have one question before we adjourn. Assuming that's, um and I know we talked about moving community school to October, but are we all in agreement as to what we're looking for? Have you had an opportunity to speak with Tracy about what we're asking or what I had brought up that I'd like to see in the report?
We need more conversation because I I, it may be that Tracy and Beth are clear, I'm not clear yet
Okay.
On on that, so um I think if, I suspect that they can tell me from their conversation with you what you're looking for.
Okay.
Or you and I can.
Yep, I just, I just wanna make sure that we're clear just so that.
I think what we're, what we're looking at is, we will make a report um now on September seventeenth on the summer programs. So that is uh Title One, Title Two, Title Three, Summer Boost and Act Venture. That report will all be about what happened in the summer.
Okay.
And then she will have another opportunity to give you an update on um the year for community school. And then um Beth has has asked Tracy in the community school to develop um a, an improvement plan, much like the school improvement plans. So that will be a third opportunity to bring um Tracy in the community school.
Great, thank you.
Alright, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.